Good evening, everyone. I'll call this meeting to order. Please note the attendant. There's nobody for the open forum? Okay. I would like everybody then to please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I'd ask the council to approve the minutes of the special city council work session of May 13th, 2014, and the regular city council meeting of May 13th, 2014.
So moved.
Any questions, discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have presentation. Our first presentation is the presentation and receipt of the City of Richfield Comprehensive Annual Fiscal Report for the fiscal year ended December 31st, 2013. Please introduce.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council. Matt Mayer with the city's auditing firm, KDV, is here, and he's just going to have a brief presentation on the 2013 audit.
Thank you, Chris. Madam members of the council, thank you for the invitation to present tonight. I have two purposes tonight. One is to present the results of this year's audit, and then with any remaining time that I have, just to give you a brief financial overview of the city's finances for the end of the year, just to give you some perspective on the results of operation. It is the city's responsibility each year to prepare financial statements for the public to show the results of operations, and now I think is a good time to thank Chris and his team in the finance department. They were very well-prepared for this year's audit. Having auditors in the house the entire week is not a normal day in the office for your finance team, and they were very helpful throughout the entire process, and we have a very excellent product for you to review tonight. Our job as auditors is to come in at the end of the year, test-examine, give an opinion on those financial statements. We're independent of the city, and by providing that opinion, users of the financial statements can be assured of their accuracy. We do that through our independent auditor's report, which you'll find in front of the comprehensive annual financial report, and we're providing an unmodified opinion, which is the best opinion we can give the city. What that means is the financial statements and the numbers that we're going to be looking at are materially accurate. They're a true picture of the city's financial position at the end of the 2013 fiscal year, and a true presentation of the changes in financial position, and that's the revenue coming into the city, the expenditures going out. Along with that audit, we performed two other audits, two compliance audits. If the city receives more than $500,000 in federal money during any fiscal year, the feds want to make sure that you're spending that money appropriately, and ask us as your auditors to test for compliance on that. We test various programs each year. This year, we selected the Section 8 program, and happy to report no findings whatsoever when it comes to that program. And then finally, the office of the state auditor here in Minnesota requires that we test the city on various state statutes that apply to municipalities at the state. Everything from how you're depositing and investing your monies, to how you're doing your contracting and bidding, to making sure there's no conflict of interest with anyone here at the city, and again, happy to report no findings for 2013. Also, I'm offering three audit reports tonight. All three are the highest level or best that I can provide you, so an extremely clean audit for the city for the 2013 fiscal year. With my remaining time, I just want to give you a brief overview on the performance of the general fund for the year, and take a quick look at your enterprise funds as well. The best way to look at the general fund is from a budget compliance standpoint. This is the main operating fund of the city. All the city functions, like public safety, fire, public works, run through the general fund, and you as a council spend a lot of time, starting already probably this summer, for next year to talk about what that budget's going to look like, how you're going to fund that. So when we look at the budget, we take that very seriously as auditors. That's really the policy of the city, and once you approve that at the end of the year with a levy, it's administration's job to execute that budget on your behalf. So just to remind you for 2013, your general fund budget called for about $18.8 million in revenue, about $20.6 million in expenditures, and the shortfall was going to be made up for from transfers from other funds. Your liquor fund and other funds are going to transfer dollars into the general fund to ultimately balance the budget for the year. Revenue for the year actually came in much better than anticipated, about $1.1 million over budget, about half of that related to property taxes coming in better than anticipated, and some optimistic news, we're starting to see development pick up a little bit, so you're seeing buildings and permits and charges for services doing a little bit better than anticipated as well. Expenditures for the year came in under budget by about a quarter of a million dollars. The administration did a nice job in keeping an eye on spending during the year, and you're going to see that each function of government, all six or seven presented there, from administrative services to public safety to public works, all came in under budget. So each of the different departments here at the city contributed to that, and as a result, you came in under budget spending for the year. Because revenue came in so much better than anticipated and expenditures were under budget, that transfer that you needed from the other funds was only about half of what the original budget called for, so those other resources could stay in those funds for those. So I think excellent year for the general fund. A five-year history shows that you traditionally have expenditures exceeding revenue that's made up for with those transfers from other funds, but you'll also notice that the fund balance has increased each of those five years as well. Fund balance is the financial health of the city, and that's the number to look at to see how healthy you are in the general fund and to decide if you're moving in the right direction. You have a fund balance policy here at the city of 40 percent. That means if you want to have a fund balance at the end of the year, it represents 40 percent of a year's worth of revenue. The number at the end of 2013 was about 38.7, so not only did you execute the budget well during the year, but you ended up right in line with your expectations. Fine. A quick look at general fund revenues. This chart is going to tell you three big things. One is that intergovernmental revenue, state aid, and money from other federal sources and the like is starting to dwindle, and that's coming down, and you as a city have ultimately prepared for that. The other thing it's going to tell you is that there's really another way to make up for that other than property taxes, so each year you're going to see the property tax levy has gone up a little bit, about 3.8 percent for 2013 over 2012. And the other is the magnitude of the property tax in relation to the other revenue. You're going to see that while charges for services, licenses and permits, it's nice to see those have a little bit of an uptick during the year, that really, once you as a council set that levy for the year, that's really going to drive what you can do as far as operations go. Because the levy makes up about three-quarters of the general fund revenue year over year. For 2013, it was 76 percent; for 2012, it was about 70. Spending for the year in the general fund was up about 5 percent, and the spending that for the increases in spending were mostly in the areas of public safety, fire, and public works, and not coincidentally, those are the three main areas of spending in your general fund. You as a council have set priorities in those areas, making sure the streets are in good shape, and that public safety and fire protection come next. When we look at the actual spending for the year, we're going to see about 56 percent of your dollars go to public safety and fire, and about 21 percent to public works, so that's about three-quarters of the budget going to those particular categories. Go back a year, you're going to see very similar numbers, and we as auditors like to see that consistency. That tells us that you as a council know where your priorities lie, that you budget consistently for those each year, and then when you hand that off to administration, they're able to execute that budget. To wrap things up tonight, I want to take just a quick look at each of your enterprise funds. Enterprise funds, we're going to look at just a little bit differently because they are to be run like a business. Basically, we want them to be self-supporting, that charges for services are going to cover the cost of doing business in that fund. And the first fund is the liquor fund. And the liquor fund had a little bit of an off-year. Sales were down about 6 percent, but there was good reasons for that. The North Lindale store was closed for about a month and a half for some renovations, and ultimately, sales were down as a result. And Penn Avenue had some challenges with some road construction, so getting to the store is a little bit tougher as well. So it's not unusual to see that that is the case. The way we like to look at the liquor store activity is, first of all, operating income. We want to make sure that it is generating revenue, and it did that. It was profitable for the year, $871,000 of operating income that are available now for other uses here at the city. The other number we like to look at is gross profit percentage. That is the profitability of the store, and that is the markup on the product, and that gives you an idea of what your gross profit is going to be at the end of the year. And just to give you some perspective, that number was 25.6 for 2013, was 25.5 last year. We provided some of your neighboring cities as examples. They're a little bit higher, and the state average is about 25.8. So you're right in line with the state average, but maybe a tick or two below when it comes to your price. Water and Sewer Fund had a good year. It was profitable, had operating income, both with depreciation factored in and factored out. You've spent some time as a city looking at the rate structure, making sure that that's covering costs in this fund, and I can tell you that for both 2012 and 2013, that you covered the everyday operating cost of doing business in that fund, and also by covering the depreciation cost, you're setting dollars aside for renewal and replacement. And a similar story with Storm. Finally, the Recreation Fund is the last one I want to take a look at with you tonight. And as I mentioned earlier, we're hoping in an enterprise environment that that fund is going to be self-supporting, that it's not going to need to be subsidized by other resources. And this fund has a long history at the city, going back to the days when you had the 18-hole golf course, and at those times, it was a profitable fund, and it was self-supporting because of that. With that operation being gone now, and the other remaining operations not being profit centers, so to speak, this fund has had some challenges being self-supporting. In fact, it is in a deficit position, and you can see that those deficits have grown each of the last several years. Revenue has been flat and declining, and expenses, while they're doing, oh, administration's been doing a good job trying to keep those flat and keeping them level, but they have upticked a little bit each year. So as a result, you can see the operating loss has grown each of these years, and we did have a recommendation for administration to consider reclassifying that fund out of an enterprise environment to a governmental fund, maybe rolling it into a recreation or parks department, and as a result, then it's ultimately going to be subsidized and need subsidies to provide those operations going forward. We don't anticipate that there's a way that this fund is going to be self-supporting. So I wanted to provide that to you tonight firsthand, and I know administration's working behind the scenes on a plan to address that. I'm going to leave it at that tonight. I know you received our management letter ahead of time with the charts and graphs, and if there's any charts in there that I didn't cover tonight that you had questions on, I'd be happy to answer those, or if there's anything regarding the city's finances or the results of our audit that you'd like me to address that I haven't, I'd be happy to do that. So thanks again for the opportunity to work with me and the chance to present.
Comments or questions for our auditor? I'm just looking over the material weaknesses. I always look at that because I'm an auditor, so I always go to the page about what we need to improve. Can you just explain to me, because it looks like we were trying to do the right thing by following our auditors from the past year, and yet, this is not quite the way it's supposed to be. Maybe, Mr. Regis, you'd like to talk to me about that?
I think there's several ways to do things out there, and I think the previous firm thought, you know, I think they kind of struggled with it too, and I was looking to them for guidance on how to make the treatment of the land that the city held and things like that. I was perfectly, you know, comfortable doing it that way, but when Matt came along and his staff and, you know, started pointing out or suggesting that maybe this would be the proper way, I said, you know, that makes a lot more sense, and I agreed with what they did, and so I have no problem with making that change. I think, I think right now, the way we've got it classified and recorded in the city's books is it's a much more conservative method, and it's probably the more correct method to do it. I don't, I think either way was okay, but I think this is the more correct method to do it by.
Just a follow-up question, then. It says, reduce land sale for, held for resale, you know, just it's done, or a million dollars, but we have a lot of, we have a lot of sale, I mean, properties we hold for.
There's a lot of properties over the Cedar Point area left over from the original development I think that's waiting to be developed, and then there's also, there's odds and ends lots that have been purchased off and on throughout the years and things like that. So there's some land out there, but we were incorrectly, and I realize it after the fact, we were valuing it at the cost that we purchased it, but we should have been valuing it at the cost. Well, one portion of it we had valued correctly, but other portions we hadn't valued correctly. We weren't consistent in the way we were valuing the land, and this is what we went through this year through Matt and his staff with their help, and we correctly valued all the land that we were holding.
Oh, that's, okay, all right. Just trying to understand the issue here, what we're doing. Okay. All right. That's the only questions I had. Anybody else?
Do we have to make a motion?
Yes. Would you like to make a motion?
I'd like to make that motion.
Please.
So I'll make a motion to accept the auditor's report.
A second. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you, Chris. Okay, now we have more presentations. This was put off from last week because we wanted to make sure that our participants could come. This is a presentation regarding National Public Works Week, and Mike Easling is going to come and join me down here.
I'm Mike Easling, Public Works Director, and I'm going to let Chris explain our operations superintendent, kind of go over some of the activities from our National Public Works Week and how we involve some members of the community. So Chris, do you want to fill us in a little bit?
Sure. Public Works Week was last week. The theme this year was building for today, planning for tomorrow, and to celebrate this year, we partnered with Sheridan Hills Elementary School. We did a couple events over there, the events we, that took place. We had staff go over there and make presentations to the pre-K, the kindergarten, and the first grade classes. We had a little bit of a little equipment show. We brought, we brought a loader, a grader, and a snowplow, a dump truck over there for the kids to take a look at, and the last thing we did was we had a poster contest with the fifth grade class. The theme, we're trying to include the theme, building today, planning for tomorrow, or what public works means to you, and we do have one of the winners here. It was a collaborative, or collaborative effort. There's three students that worked on this. We have one today, if you'd please come up. We've got a copy of this. This is Antonia Caston, one of the three. The other, the other two artists, Benta Koma and Annika Rudolph, weren't able to make it today, but we have a copy of their art submission right here and a Sweet Streets t-shirt.
I love the Sweet Streets. Congratulations.
Mike, you want to talk about Sweet Streets a little bit?
Yeah, we'll, we want to shake your hand, too. Go this way.
The council may recall, last year, when we started looking at some of the projects that were coming up, and we were going to mill and overlay just virtually every residential street in town, and Portland Avenue, there was federal funding for that, and we're going to improve 66th Street in the next couple of years, and the planning processes, we're beginning with that. The council said at that time, we've got to market this thing, we have to engage the community, and so the Transportation Commission has led an effort to really engage the community on all the changes that are happening. Oh, I've got to show off my shirt.
These are really cool.
So we have Sweet Streets t-shirts that is helping the community maybe identify with all of the changes that are going to go on in town, because not only is it doing some, really some needed maintenance on our residential streets, but there's going to be a new look, a new feel to the streets in Richfield on Portland Avenue and on 66th Street. It's kind of exciting to see the planning process that's taking place through the Transportation Commission. And if you haven't seen that, we have lots of things on our website for you to get a better understanding of what we're trying to do. The Transportation Commission is leading all these open houses and trying to engage the community to make sure this is a once-in-a-couple-of-generations that we're going to make the kind of change that we're talking about on Portland and 66th Street, and we really want to get that right, and so we want to make sure everybody has a say in this thing. So there's a way for you to connect through our website, there's, please come to our open houses and be engaged in our new Sweet Streets in Richfield. So, thanks.
Mr. Easling, is this poster going to be displayed out in our lobby for a while?
Yes.
So people can see this?
Yes.
Because this is wonderful. Yeah, thank you. Thank you, great artist. It's so nice to see you. Thank you for doing that.
Thanks for coming.
You know, Mr. Easling, I just wanted to thank you because, you know, you're all over the place, not necessarily you, but a lot of your staff folks, and they really take the time to explain things. And so you should, you know, you run a good staff, you're doing a good job, and I'm glad that this is nice and bright and people can participate in it. It's, I think it makes a big difference.
Well, I'll bring that back to the staff. Thank you for saying that.
I was going to say also, Mike, more importantly, is your explanations are all over the place, so I'm happy for that.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Devitt, you've got to pay for your t-shirt.
Thank you, council member.
Council discussion, Edwina, your band. I didn't know if you knew that. Next time, you have to sit in the corner.
Madam Mayor, I accept that because I was threatened with spitballs.
Okay. I will start with Councilmember Sandal. Hats off to Uptown Hits.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Oh, cool. Photo contest. Here we go. It's all blurry.
The first item to talk about is the First Annual Richfield Photo Contest, which is pretty interesting. They need to be shots of things in Richfield, and there's different categories: people, Richfield scenery, architectural structures and man-made designs, animals and wildlife, and then youth, any Richfield subject from a photographer, excuse me, from a photographer age 18 or younger. So youth can pick, I guess, whatever they'd like. So this is, you can find this on the, on the website, and let me just pick it up because it's tiny print. It's free, it's open to any entrance, they don't have to live in Richfield, but it needs to feature Richfield. And they, there's different ways you can do it. You can email your entries to the City of Richfield, post your photo on Facebook.com/RichfieldArts, drop it off at the storage device at the Richfield Community Center on 70th and Nicklet. But when in doubt, you can go online, and the email would be N. as in Nellie Thompson, T-H-O-M-P-S-O-N, at cityofrichfield.org. So this would be very interesting if you are a photographer or a wannabe, and there are prizes, and I'm sorry to say, but the members of the city council and their families are not eligible to win a prize, but you can still enter, so that's okay. But it sounds like a lot of fun, so we'll see what we see when people start doing their entries. So that's item number one. And then just a quick announcement about the Richfield Wednesday Farmer's Market. That's the one that will take place by the old Lindale Gardens Center, now called the, what's it called? It's called Lindale Gardens. And starting next Wednesday, June 4th, running through September 10th, and it'll be from 2:00 to 7:00, and they have local farmers and producers, honey, eggs, apples and apple chips, cut flowers, chutney, arts and crafts, Minnesota fresh-grown produce, food trucks, Kona ice, and Nordic treats, Swedish meatballs, waffles, hot dogs. All right. So that's the farmer's market. And the third one is another announcement from the Richfield Recreational Services, and that's a Thursday evening series of concerts. These will all be at Augsburg Park, starting at 7:00. First one is June 5th. We have the Richfield Symphonic Band, followed by Kevin Bowe, St. Anthony Maine, there's a whole list of them. And then also on Tuesdays at noon in Augsburg Park, there's the Kids Entertainment in the park. And the first one is going to be the Teddy Bear Band, starting on June 17th, and they run all the way through the rest of June and into July. So it sounds like some good activities, and we encourage people to come.
Thanks. Councilmember Fitz Henry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A couple items to report. I attended some awesome training at Richfield. The police department put on a training for, it's called de-escalation strategies for Minnesota veterans in crisis training. Yellow Ribbon Group tried to get this here a long time ago, I'm glad it finally showed up. We had six of our officers attend, including our police chief, a number of officers from other agencies, and I kind of wish I would have got this a lot earlier in my police career, because they went through a lot of different scenarios, how to de-escalate situations and have a more viable outcome, more of a sit-and-wait attitude rather than police are used to reacting now. They talked about trauma and stress-related disorders, and then we learned a lot about post-traumatic stress disorders. What was really neat is they gave us resources right at that meeting on how we can get that person immediate help. If they're a veteran, even if they had dishonorable discharges, we learned that they're actually, they can actually get medical help in that through different agencies. So the officers left with a sheet, so they know exactly, you know, who to contact 24-hour seven, you know, 24/7 to help these people, and it was, like I said, it was very awesome. Our state director from beyond Yellow Ribbon was there, and they all said they're going to try to pass this through the state because it was that valuable. So it was really nice, and I want to thank the city of Richfield for sponsoring that. And having said that, a couple of my coworkers are retiring on the 29th. I'll, I guess we'll start from the bottom up, if we will call it that, but Detective Pat Moriarty, he's retiring, he's been on 27 years, and Sergeant Dave Cromes, he's retiring, he's been on 28 years, and then, as we all know, our police chief, Chief Todd Sidel, is retiring after 36 years with the police department. So I want to say good retirement to you guys, and thanks for serving the city of Richfield so well.
Thank you. Thank you. I did want to make a comment about the Memorial Day event. Again, the crowds were just tremendously large, and it's well impactful, and it was wonderful to hear that gentleman, that World War II vet, talk about the Merchant Marines, which is so little discussed, and we know so little, and they were the backup supply for everybody. They were everywhere. They were shot at, things happened to them all over the place, and they lost a lot of ships, too, just as we did those who were, who were actually fighting the war, they lost it, too, because they wanted to cut off our supplies as well through that battle. But beautiful music, great attendance, and the rain held off, so we, knock, knock on wood, we made it every year for a long time, the rain has just come at the end of this. So I want to thank the Boy Scouts and all the committee around that, the Veterans Memorial Committee. There's a committee, they do want board members. If you're interested in doing that, you can contact, I think, Jim Topfenshofer, he'll get you in contact. He's our director of recreation for that, so thank you, Jim. That was a great event and a wonderful day. Really enjoyed it. The other thing I wanted to talk about is the Fourth of July is coming up, and if you haven't, you need to get your Fourth of July button. I'm sure there are liquor stores and then a couple other places, maybe City Hall will have them soon, and then maybe the community center, too, has them. So go out and get your Fourth of July button because you get into the dance for free, and then, what else is discounted on that? Oh, you get a discount card for lots of the businesses around town. So get your, get your card, and they always need volunteers. If you go up to the website, you can find the link to the Fourth of July Committee, I think it's still in the Public Works Department, excuse me, in the RUC Department, and go in there. They need people to come help. You can always say hi to me, I always hold the beer. That's where they put me, put the politician behind the beer. Anyway, so please, come to the Fourth of July events, like four days full of a lot of fun and great events. Councilmember?
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. I spoke with the mayor this afternoon, and not about anything in particular, but she asked me about the Memorial Day celebration yesterday, and I told her that the last couple of years, I've had other commitments in the afternoons, I haven't been there, but I go by in the morning, and I'm going to make a suggestion, it's wonderful to have Memorial Day and the bands and people there celebrating those that have served. There's a plaque over Richfield High School that honors all the Richfield High School vets that died in Vietnam. I think my recollection is there's 13 names on there, and 11 of them I knew personally. I all went to high school with every one of them. And when I went over there yesterday morning, I was coming from St. Mary's, you go down and see your parents and your relatives down there and come back and stop in, and I've never been to Washington, D.C., I've never been to the Vietnam Memorial, but you hear a lot of stories about the impact it has on people and the solemn sense and just the serenity and the peace you have by just being there. And when I was over there yesterday morning, I actually ran into Jim Topfenshofer, and but before he came by, there was a couple taking pictures and not a bustle, but just getting set up. But, you know, I don't think you need a personal experience with someone that's died in war. I think everybody, everybody in our community and probably everybody in America has a relative, a friend, a neighbor that served. Some didn't come back, some did, but my sense is, and I'm not, I don't look backwards very often, but there's kind of an awe, there's a sense of peace, there's a sense of serenity, and there's a sense of gratitude, particularly when I can look on there and see the star on the names next to the people I went to school with. And I joined the Army in 1965 when I was 17 years old. I was halfway through boot camp when the first 50,000 got sent to Vietnam, and this is really going to date me, but in your mind, that was the only place I wanted to go. It wasn't that far removed from the Second World War, the Korean War, you still could see John Wayne and Sanz of Iwo Jima. That's, that's what American youth did when called or when necessary. Quirk of fate, whatever it was, I ended up going to Germany, I never was in a war zone or anything like that, but I look at that now, and it's kind of strange because you look at friends, people you had, and I spent four years in the Army, I look at them, and And this, this is really going to date me, but, but in your mind, that was the only place I wanted to go. It wasn't that far removed from the Second World War, the Korean War. You still could see John Wayne in Sanzabuajima. That's, that's what American youth did when called or when necessary. Quirk of fate, whatever it was, I ended up going to Germany. I never was in a war zone or anything like that. But I look at that now and it's kind of strange because you look at friends, people you had. And I spent four years in the Army, I look at them. And my four years pales in comparison to the sacrifices they made. And the serenity and the peace that I had just wandering through there and looking at the names and appreciating what they did. You know, the celebrations are great, but if you get a chance, go through and walk through there. And, and you'll think of the people you knew, the people that did come back, the people that didn't. But that makes that gratitude, you go even deeper and feeling better. So I'd suggest if you get a chance, go walk through by yourself or with your spouse or your kids or anything, because it really, it really has an impact on me and I believe it will on you too when you think about what that really means.
Alright, thank you. I want to bring up one other quick item. We have to schedule a budget meeting somewhere at the last of the year. And we sometimes cancel a meeting, but we talked about, you know, that meeting usually also ends up being the meeting we cancel, but then we end up having because of the budget. So as we look forward in the agenda, maybe City Manager, you can let us know what the agendas look like. And if there's a meeting we're going to usually cancel for vacations, if it's possible, we usually do that. Could you give us some guidance on that? And can you throw some dates at, we don't have to worry about the budgeting being so tight, close now? Let's do it ahead of time? Is that possible?
Madam Mayor, members of the council. You know, the, the thing that we're up against with the budget is that we get the data that we need to put together a meaningful budget late. It's really, it's, it's the best, if we can, if we could have our first budget meeting being that very, very first part of, of September. The week after that last week in August. And by that time, Chris usually has all the data that he needs to put it together. It's, it's actually pretty hard to even put the budget document together to get it into City Council's hands by anything, anything sooner than, oh heck, like the end of the second week in, in August. And so it leaves us a pretty small window. And, and the point that we make there is, yeah, it's pretty, you know, if you're going to cancel the last council meeting in August so people can take vacations, and then we turn around and schedule a budget meeting the same week, that's not very.
And that's happened, that's happened to us.
It's happened to, and that's not, yeah, that's not good. I mean, that's what we'd rather not do.
So I was going to ask of the council member too, meetings, and, and ask you, you know, what, you probably know what's kind of coming down the docket, how much we need to be here and what, what do council members think about making it a different week? And what week would work for everybody?
My schedule is not exactly etched in stone. If we can set it, it's easier if you set it because then I can work around it.
You know, I, I think we'll do that. I'll talk to, I'll talk to Chris.
And you'll get back to us for the first meeting in June? So we know.
Oh, yeah.
And give us an idea. Because if there's something we all need to be here for, then we all need to be here, right?
Sure, sure.
So, but it would be nice if we moved that and didn't have to reschedule for the budget meeting. So maybe we'll take the second week in July off instead? The second meeting in July?
The second meeting in July rather than the second meeting in August? We, we can take a look and see.
Take a look if that works, but you know, my, my concern too is always what do we have coming down the pipeline?
Yeah.
But then that actually gives council off the time and they don't have to schedule the budget meeting in where the, the City Council meeting used to be. And we've done that before.
Yes.
And we talked about maybe moving it this next year. So I wanted to bring it up early, since it's now still technically May. So we could talk about that.
Yeah.
So maybe you can bring that. Thank you. Council, please be thinking about that near vacations and family obligations. I might ask council approval of the agenda.
So move.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. Aye opposed? The agenda is approved. City Manager, we have the consent calendar in a short one.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. Tonight's consent calendar contains a few separate items, which are going to be acted upon by the City Council in one motion. Once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and the recommended actions will also have been approved and no further council action on those items will be necessary. Tonight, there are only three items on the consent calendar, starting off with consideration of the approval of a resolution authorizing the Richfield City HRA to reduce the original tax capacity of the City Bella redevelopment tax increment district due to the homestead market value exclusion. Item B is consideration of approval of a resolution modifying the healthcare savings plan for eligible LALS Local Number 162 employees, and that's police supervisory employees. And finally, item C, consideration of the approval of an agreement between Hennepin County and the City of Richfield for funding a rain garden for the Woodlake Nature Center. And that concludes tonight's consent calendar.
I'll move the calendar.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. Aye opposed? Motion carries. Councilmember Garcia, you have item seven.
Thank you very much, Mayor. And being that I was not afforded the opportunity to participate in hats off to Richfield, I will read item number seven, word for word. And then hopefully we will have a terrific discussion about it.
Brutal.
Okay, this is the second reading and consideration of a summary, of summary publication of an ordinance that will remove correct outdated terminology, clarify a number of definitions, allow home occupations to operate within garages and accessory structures, correct and add references, add parking requirements for two-family and cluster housing developments, revise setback from two-family residential properties, and clarify screening and temporary banner requirements. And we had this discussion last time around. And one of the things that was of concern to the council was the fact that, you know, we wanted, we wanted to get more information on the drive-through uses in the mixed-use districts. And that was pulled by staff and they are looking to, to study that a little bit further and, and then come back with, with that part of the, of, you know, of that clarification. So I, I don't know if you, Mr. Stark? And I was going to ask, excuse me, I was going to ask the City Attorney, I don't have to read all of those subdivision things, do I? I'll just say it's outlined as in the, in the official report given to us. Good.
Yeah, Madam Mayor and councilmembers, this really is housekeeping. You know, we keep notes throughout the year of things that need to get fixed. There's nothing controversial in here. The only things that we note are home occupations that, based on a conversation with the planning commission and based on the changing nature of home occupations, we are suggesting that home occupations could occupy a garage or accessory structure, provided that it's not an intensive use such as auto repair or those kinds of things. And secondly, to specify that screening is not just required from view from public places, but it will also be required from view from adjacent private properties and on the development property itself. This is something we, screening is something we feel like we have had great success with. And, you know, when you go, when you drive down the street, well, maybe when you park, you shouldn't look up and drive. But it's one of those things you don't notice, the rooftop mechanicals in Richfield. And it's because the, the screening ordinance is there. If, if you drive into other communities, you'll see all kinds of unsightly utilities on top of buildings. I would just note that there's a typo on, under the summary of additional changes on the second bullet. And that's with regards to pervious pavers. And the sentence that begins, "Due to the required ongoing maintenance of these pavers, they are permitted but are," and I should say, "but are not counted toward the allowable impervious surface area." But other than that, like I said, it's housekeeping.
Okay, then I will move that we approve the attached ordinance, amending all the subsections listed on our staff report.
And are you going to do two as well? Are you going to do two as well? Number two as well?
Oh, let me see.
Just scroll down.
Oh, absolutely, thank you. And approve the attached resolution authorizing summary publication of an ordinance amending the city zoning ordinance. Changes are related to outdated terminology and references, clarification of definitions and language related to home occupations, setback, screening and temporary banners.
And would you like to second that as well? Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I really would have liked to have heard you read all of them. Councilmember Sandow.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have item number eight, which is to consider a resolution supporting the Metro Orange Line Bus Rapid Transit Project and proposed alignment within Richfield. And you probably all know the, the Orange Line Bus Rapid Transit is looking, that's the BRT, would be coming down 35W from downtown Minneapolis through Richfield and then on into Bloomington and south, eventually they hope as far as Lakeville. So this is a resolution of support that's attached. And for people who may not know about it, in the alignment through Richfield, there is a bus stop at 66th Street. And then another one at 76th Street is being proposed, near Best Buy. And then the current proposal is that the bus would run under Knox Avenue underneath 494 and come up on the South Town side, the west side of, east side of South Town, and then get back onto the freeway again at 82nd. And there would be a bus stop on the Bloomington side as well. So that would be really great for Richfield residents. We would have access both to South Town underneath the tunnel for our residents and in Richfield itself in two locations. So that would put us on that bus line, which I think will be very useful for residents. The one thing I would, and Mike Esling is here, I would ask him. I had one minor suggestion when the resolution was passed around. If you want to look at the resolution at the back.
He's here.
No, I know he's here.
Oh, okay.
But I just want his opinion on this. In paragraph three of the resolution, it says, "Whereas the city's comprehensive plan promotes improvement," I'm sorry, paragraph four. "Whereas the Metro Orange Line Bus Rapid Transit is planned on I-35W with BRT stations at 66th Street and 76th Street and a new transitway across I-494 at Knox Avenue that would accommodate pedestrians and bicycles." My question is, shouldn't we really have that read under?
Yeah.
Rather than across, across 494? The word under? Okay, that would be one suggestion. And then we did, the 494 Quarter is doing a similar resolution for all of their members. And there was another recommendation, and I'll throw it out in case the body wants to include it. And that is to recommend an additional one, and maybe it's already here, let's see. It's, "Whereas the commission," in this case it would be the city, "has identified the implementation of the Orange Line Transit Way as a legislative priority." And I don't know whether we need that or not, but that's in their particular resolution and I would think we would agree with that.
I can agree to that. And since we're making a change anyway, can we just add that? Council?
Yes, good idea.
Yes, great idea, thank you.
Okay, so other than that, then I would move that we approve, provide support for the resolution supporting the Metro Orange Line Bus Rapid Transit Project and Knox Avenue alignment.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. Aye opposed? Motion carries. And, thank you, councilmember.
And then, Mike, I don't know if you want to add anything, just talking about, we're not quite sure yet what it looks like underneath Knox Avenue, underneath the freeway.
Madam Mayor, members of the council. Yeah, right now, this calls for a transit line, which would be a bus, bus lanes going in each direction underneath 494, as well as pedestrian and bikeway. It's silent on whether there's going to be a general purpose lane in there. It's something that the cities will have to work, work through and decide whether they want. But that's kind of a separate issue and we'll need to go through some form of analysis to see how worthwhile that might be. So, like I say, we're silent on that. But it, it would be probably good to have a discussion in some upcoming study sessions on this topic.
Okay, but it does, I think all parties agree that it would include the bus line and then pedestrian and bicycles, I think.
That's right.
I think that's the general consensus so far.
That's right.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thanks. This is item number nine. And it is consideration of the agency's agreement number 05795 between the Minnesota Department of Transportation and the City of Richfield for additional right-of-way funds. This was exciting when I saw this. In 2009, the city reconstructed the Lindell Avenue Bridge over I-9494. The $34 million project required 5.1 million in right-of-way in Richfield, including a $1.4 million settlement with the former Hampton Inn. That's the Ramada, what it was. It's a Four Points by Sheridan now. The city's MSA tax dollars portion of that right-of-way settlements was covered, 1.3 million. The city staff has been persistent in pursuing additional federal-state funds for these acquisition costs. After closing out other accounts in the project, MnDOT informed the city that there was some underspent federal funds that could be applied to the Richfield acquisition portion of the project. To that end, MnDOT worked with the city to draft an agency agreement between the two parties that would reimburse the city with an additional $440,000 in federal, in federal fund dollars. Then the net effect to the city is to reduce the city's MSA portion of the acquisition down to $915,000. So this was really exciting. And I want to say thank you to the staff first for staying after this and keeping after this and helping the city out. I mean, we have other road construction that we definitely desperately need and we have to bring our dollars to it too, for the, even the county roads, we have to put it. So this gives us more money to do that.
Yep. I have to identify Liz Finnegan, who was the author of this letter, that she's more accountant than engineer maybe, that she's been tracking this stuff. And this has not been easy, but she's been persistent and do it to a large part of her efforts. We were able to get this money.
That's wonderful, and thank you, thank you for doing that. So at this time, I'll make a motion, a motion to approve the attached resolution accepting the agreement number 05795 between the Minnesota Department of Transportation, MnDOT, and the City of Richfield for additional right-of-way funds for the Lindell Avenue Bridge. Second. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries.
Just a quick question, if I may, Mike, before you leave. So does this like backfill MSA or what happens, where do the dollars go?
Yeah, that's it exactly, it does backfill the MSA money.
Okay, so we can use it in the future on something else?
That's right.
Exactly.
That's wonderful.
Isn't it great, isn't it though? City Managers' Report.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, just a couple of very.
Excuse me, Mr. Carter, you probably don't want to leave yet. No.
Got scolded.
He sat down pretty quickly.
Well, I noticed that. Well, has that way.
Yeah. Where was I? Oh, yeah.
Don't leave.
Yeah, don't, don't leave, Jim, Mr. Carter. Just a couple of quick things. You know, kind of interesting, and I was going to, I'll put this out, so you just, you have it in writing too, but we've been very busy in our Dep Reg Office. And City Clerk Nancy Gibbs came to me the other day and gave me a report. And in fact, I was, I was talking with Nancy about it this morning when, Mayor, when you walked in to the City Clerk's office. Very interesting. You know, the City Clerk's office has done more business, more revenue in passports in the first four months of the, of this year than they did in the entire 2013. And they're doing it with basically the same amount of staff.
Wow.
Amazing.
That's pretty, pretty darned amazing, just amazing. And the only other thing I want to comment on, Bill Filmer put together a really nice craft beer event at the new Lindell Liquor Store. And I just got some of the debriefing of that this morning. I was there and I was just, I was just astounded at all the people coming and going and all the craft beer vendors there. And just what a cool event it was. I think that we ended up with a customer count of almost 1,000 customers just that day. I think the beer sales alone for the craft beer was something like $10,000. But, but the key was that you, you know, you had about 350, 375 more customers than we had at the same time last year. But, you know, you're bringing all those new people into that area. And after that, after the event the other evening, I walked across the street and I walked into the new Von Hansen's, which is open, and what a beautiful facility.
Beautiful store.
Then I walked across the street and walked in with the new Lynn 65 Restaurant that they continue to work on, just, you know, trying to figure out how quickly they're going to get that open. And, and then of course, Lakewins is going to open up on, on or about June, June 18th or so. But it's just fantastic to see all that, kind of all that new life breathed into that area and, and just how cool of an area it's turning out to be.
And Mr. City Manager, I was, I know you had a meeting today in St. Paul, and this is why I wanted Mr. Carter to stay. Can you and the mayor kind of give us, you know, a briefing as to, you know, what's happening and when, and I know that things have not happened rapidly, but.
Right. Yeah, I can, I can give a brief piece on that, but it'll be not very informative, unfortunately. You were going to say something, Tom?
No, I assumed you were going to talk about the bonding bill or.
Yes, it's about the bonding bill.
Yeah, well, today, you know, because we were successful in getting something in the bonding bill, and, and the way, the way it's put together, there's two pieces. There's, there's $24 million that are in the bonding part, of which Richfield and Anokar, two projects that are mentioned specifically. Then there's another $30 million in cash. So there's $54 million. But, you know, exactly how that money is to be distributed to which projects is, is not stated. And the money. projects, is not stated. And the money is going to go over through MnDOT. And so today, the mayor and I joined Linda Slocum, Mike Esling was there, and Andy Kozak, who has been working with us on the bill. We met with the commissioner, Commissioner Zelli, and John Griffith from MnDOT to try and get a sense, number one, of how much of that money is really going to go to us and how do we go about getting it. And frankly, we didn't, I don't think we learned anything.
No, they, the process has just started and this is a new instrument.
Right.
And that's what they did. And so there isn't a process for it. Of course, by state statute, there has to be a process of some sort. So again, we're in there, we're going to get a chunk of money. We just don't know how much. We don't even know what the process is going to be. And so Charlie Zelli said, "Just hold on, we will get this through."
Yeah.
It'll take a little time. He asked us for our patience, but those projects are spelled out and so it'll just be a matter of time.
I'm just curious, you, I mean, you, you said that, that as it was written or as it was allocated, Anoka and Ridgefield are named. Are there other municipalities that are going to be sharing that, that pot of gold also? Well, you know, that's, that's the question because, you know, it talks about highway projects and, you know, I guess if you looked at it and with the most broad interpretation, that means, I guess, that other cities or other counties across the state of Minnesota could take a look at that. Or certainly some of that money is designated for that.
Are you saying though, that that pot is still open then for people that want to apply for portions of it?
Well, that's, that's, that's part of what we need to find out.
Yeah, and I don't think that they're really sure themselves. Again, this was a new instrument that was put together at the very end of the session. And there's only two cities that were named for, for pieces of that already.
On the bonding part, on the bonding 24 million.
Yes.
We're not named in the, in the 30 million. But, you know, the point that the mayor and I and Mike tried to, you know, get across to them is, you know, there's a, there's a tipping point. There's a, there's a mass of money that we need out of that pot to make this project go. And if, you know, if we get a big enough pot on the front end, then we'll, we'll work to put the other part of that money together. And I'm confident we can. But the critical mass has to be there out of this money from the bonding bill. And, you know, right now, we're just sitting tight and kind of waiting. And, you know, we've told them that the minute we find out how much money is available to us and what the process is, we're ready to go immediately. Mike and I and Kristen have talked about this. We know exactly what we're going to do, exactly how we would approach it. It's just, you know, give us the, give us the flag to go.
Were you given any, any hint of a timeline on their part? I mean, what, what, what are they trying to do on their end of it?
I, you know, Mayor, you can speak, but I think, I don't really think...
They're waiting for direction actually from, from probably some of the Altisun and Tom Bach, who did some of this work and the bonding folks, and from the governor's office as well. And so it will just be a matter of time. Of course, what happens right after the session is that they all go off to their trips and everything and they've just gotten back into town again. So again, there isn't direction on this yet.
No.
And it's a brand-new tool. So we'll know more and they promise to keep us in the loop of how we can access the dollars and when.
Yeah.
And then they'll give us exactly how much.
You know, it's, it's just a wonderful mixed bag of feelings. We love to have our name there.
I know.
I certainly wish they were a little bit more definitive when they're giving money out.
They would like to be too. And Charlie said, "I'd love to be able to give you something," but he says, "I really can't and I have to," you know, because they don't know who else has spoken for other possibilities of the, some of those dollars in excess of course what we need in the other cities. So, but we'll keep you tuned. As soon as we know more, we'll, we'll let you know when the process starts because it's going to go.
Because it's important to know even if we don't know. It's important to know that we don't know.
Yeah.
And the one thing that, you know, you, you guys have really, you know, and I'm talking about, you know, you all that have really worked on, on this issue, have really done a good job of selling the issue to the powers that be. Because the issue had merit and the issue had, you know, regional significance. And those are the two things that, that the bonding chairs look at before they even consider anything. So you, I think you've done a good job of making sure that, that, that bill was crafted and, you know, the right way. And I, and I think all, like I said, you know, besides, besides the city and, and Linda, Linda Slocum and Senator Wicklin, you know, from what I hear, and I just, and I was just talking to a legislative person this weekend, you know, they really did a good job on the floor in working with the other committee members, legislators, and with leadership. And that's really where it's at.
Yeah.
And I think it all begins and ends with the two, you know, I'll mention two things that, you know, what they say about the legislature, you know, you don't want to see sausage being made and you don't want to see laws being made either because, you know, they wind up the way we are now.
Yeah. Commissioner Zelli was there and he spoke so highly of the project and how well it was. And we talked about our partners who were coming with us to the table, that we had Sue Hag out here and, you know, that Hennepin County is on the table, MAC, Three Rivers Park District. And so, you know, we have a lot of good partners that are at the table and that's what they wanted to hear too. But they spoke highly of the project and said that they saw all the significance, especially with the expansion of the Mall of America and the expanding airport need. They saw that, especially with the 100 bus routes that would come through as soon as that opened up out of the MTC garage. So...
Well, I'm glad you brought that up because I think that...
That was huge.
That was huge and that, that's got to be something that they don't forget.
They don't forget it and they ask about it all the time. And Sue Hag was amazed about how close that was when she was out here and how, and she says, "Oh, I get this. I really get this."
You know, I think what I'll, I think what I'll do is, I think that, like every Friday, I'll send out a, I'll just send out a council email and it may just say that I haven't heard anything new, but at least I'll tell you what I know. And, you know, I would, I guess what I would say is, like the mayor said a few minutes ago, I think we're going to have to be patient, I think, for, for, for right now. As much as everyone's anxious to just get going on it and we'd like to get in there and get our money and...
He didn't bring a check. Didn't he bring his check?
Yeah. He didn't, yeah. The commissioner didn't bring a check. But, you know, you know, we have our ideas of how much we want. The project really, you know, we've, we've looked at it and 21.21.1 million would do the job. We're pretty competent. And, you know, the front end of it is going to require some money for engineering, some money for acquisition. And then it's another big chunk of it, of course, is the construction itself. But again, if you have enough critical mass to get going and move the project along, I'm really confident that we'll get the rest of it done. And the City of Ridgefield, you know, will ultimately likely have to step up to the table and put some money up. But, you know, you gotta, you gotta do what you gotta do to get it done.
Yeah.
I, I hope you send us an email someday saying, "There is light at the end of the Ridgefield tunnel."
Yeah, sort of like.
There is a tunnel at the end of the road.
See that when they drill that through. I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm going to be down there. I'm going to be taking those last shovel pulls.
And, and Mr. Carter was a cheerleader.
Yes.
For this project and...
Absolutely. Right, he was. And is, continues to be.
Yes. Thanks.
I mean, you can go now if you want.
Councilmembers handoff.
Just a reminder that one of our things on our list is to rename 76th, 77th Street. And that's something we should, now that we may actually have a street that continues, we should be looking at.
We should get going on that. I'm all for that. I think that's going to really set us apart because there's American Boulevard and people won't recognize it if we don't rename it to a named street differently. So, and I like some of the suggestions that are already coming out. So...
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move claims and payroll.
So moved. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Seeing no further items, I call this meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for coming.
Thank you.